Please stand, students and then after this, we have a short moment of silence for Betsy Proshus.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic where we stand. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It feels weird being here on Monday night. Welcome everybody. Weird. So I just need approval of the very low meeting minutes from me to want to discuss.
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion of all the errors they had? Any extension? Any opposed? Any extensions in any areas? To public participation? Anybody from the public that could come up? Questions, concerns, report?
Um, points of, uh, sorry, if you don't have time for this. Um, Professor, do you have anything of, um, supporting more money allocated in education cost share for this kind of counties? And we do think about today, but, um, I say we call it, you know, without the, you know, the, 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 the.
What's that to you?
Yeah.
That's it? Points of information?
Um, I just brought with me today is a couple pamphlets I picked up at the, um, the eighth graders did presentations about their social action projects. Um, I was setting up for a dance, so I grabbed a couple pamphlets that some of the kids had as part of their presentations. Um, animal abuse, cruelty, gender equality and pay, veterans, homelessness, and the great Pacific garbage patch. That was just a few. But it was cafeteria full of lots of great presentations that they had. Um, here we go.
They do a slideshow on that too. I'm gonna see if I can put it to music and, uh, add it to the, uh, to the website.
I didn't have time to go around and see everything, but. We had a lot of information.
What, what classes are associated with that? Is that just?
Uh, it's eighth grade. So this is the second year, I believe, that they did it. Last year they only did one team. This year they did both teams. So it's kind of evolving, um, but the kids have to research, uh, their social action and.
They choose their own social action.
It has to be approved, but yes, they choose what they wanna research and, um, there has to be an action part of it.
So some community service kind of part.
So like their pamphlet they wanna put out in the community as part of their action to be, um, uh, sent to the water station. So Dean and Fred went out and he went around Campbell Park. So that's the subject.
I believe they, they, it's all the subjects.
Is all the subjects have to be part of it?
Adventure disciplinary, like, uh, yeah.
A lot of work.
That's awesome. So like real projects, like project based learning.
It's, yeah, project based, yep.
It's awesome. That's a lot of work.
Very involved.
It's a lot. The teachers do a great job.
Mm-hmm. For the kids, yeah, for the, the, uh, like coordination, like it's, awesome.
Yeah, put in a lot of time. Yes.
And I just wanted to say the middle school and high school graduations were great. It's always, it's one of my favorite times of the year. And I think the high school Thursday did us a good job with the situation and the circumstances that we're in. And we should be proud of that. I'm glad, I was hoping to do important ceremonies. And, uh, anybody else to another kind of information?
Thank you. Uh, I went to the TMS enrichment presentation, uh, TMSC, yeah, TMSC. And it's, uh, it consists of, um, projects. When they present like things that they did, I was super impressed with the work. I mean, there was some group of groups that created a book, like a children's book. It was really amazing. The project, some made paper and they had present, talked to whoever came up to them and they all were just really amazing. It was just really, really great to see and experience. It was, oh, it's really gotta go on right now.
Another, another project based.
Yeah.
Yeah, stuff involved in that.
Any other points of information or anything on?
Uh, I'd just like to say it, it's really an honor to be the student rep to the Board of Ed and, um, a lot of what I do, it's ve- I am very fortunate to have a position such as this. But unfortunately, it puts me in situations where things have to be said that are pretty much pouring salt into an open wound. Um, Ms. Proshus, uh, was someone who was loved by, I am one hundred ten percent positive every person in that high school. And I don't think I can name a single person who's unaffected by her passing. And, um, I'm, it, it's, it's very, it's very sad. It's very sad. And I don't think we can avoid the subject or avoid the, the topic at all. She is someone who was integral. I know she's been an advisor for student council at least the past thirty years I've been involved. Um, she was the leader of Talon Education's Union for teachers. She, she had a, she had a hat on top of her head for every occasion and a hand in everything she could because she wanted to help students and she wanted to help her colleagues as much as she could. Um, I think that goes to show how good-hearted of a person she was. Um, in saying that, perhaps on the more positive side, a scholarship has already been set up in her name uh, to benefit graphic art students, uh, seniors graduating at the, at coming graduations. Um, now, onto a different subject. Um, there have been many things that have happened at all of the schools, as most of you may know. Um, there was the awards night at the, uh, middle school and high school. Um, and the promotion ceremony and graduation, uh, the promotion ceremony for the middle school and graduation for the high school, uh, Wednesday is Thursday. Um, student council and DECA's elections at the high school also occurred. Uh, I'm going to be getting a new cohort, if you will. Uh, and Alexandra Costa is going to be my second Board of Ed rep. And she'll be showing up, I believe, meetings starting at the beginning of next school year. Um, finals happened. They're finals. That's all you can say about them. Um, and two things about graduation, again, uh, given the situation, everything was handled um, amazingly and, um, Mr. Blaze, as they pointed out, he puts his heart and soul into making graduation go as smoothly as possible. That was na- not sacrificed this year. He, he made that run smoothly and everyone who utilized the livestream of it, who couldn't get a ticket or could not go for other reasons, loved the livestream. Um, and I did hear a lot of people really loved the guest speaker this year. He brought an edge of positivity to it that I really couldn't see coming, but I think everyone loved him, so.
He was kind of perfect.
Yeah.
Nice, good graduation.
Yeah.
Sorry.
That's fine. That, that's it.
A lot. Thank you. Any comments or questions?
Well, Fisher, good work on your part of your graduation.
Absolutely, yes.
We saw you putting the rails up.
Getting the first ropes.
Oh, yeah, you did that too.
I know, I thought you'd be held, he had to notice.
No, no, we had to, we had to play our instruments.
Oh, multitasking.
Yeah.
And, uh, do you have a thought?
So to, uh, to kind of understand, um, Fisher's comments, um, you know, it's, uh, Ms. Proshus, Betsy Fury, um, also not Ms. Betsy Proshus, and worked for the school district since two thousand five as a substitute. Starting as a sub in two thousand seven as a teacher. She did involve herself in many places, in the students, staff, virtually everybody in the district is affected by her loss. Her family, obviously, has been suffering a lot last week. Of course, her son had the courage to walk across the stage of graduation on his knees. Um, just to make sure everybody has the information, relatives and friends can join the family on Tuesday, tomorrow, um, the eighteenth, from forty-seven PM at the Talon Memorial Funeral Home. And then a funeral service will take place on Wednesday through nineteen, ten AM at the United Conglational Church of Talon. So if you want to be involved in this, I just wanted to make sure that, um, you had that information. She will be sort of, this is a very sad situation. Um, to move on to the monthly financial report. As you're aware, uh, every month, first of the month, you have a report. This would represent the eleven, twelve months in the year. We did receive excess cost payment of this month. Excess cost payment was two hundred seventy thousand four hundred fifteen dollars, which pushed the, the balance up prior to balance, um, then up to the fifty-nine range. Then it went up to, uh, three hundred forty-seven thousand nine hundred and three as of May thirty-first, when the excess cost payment began. Um, since then, it's, it's down another hundred, hundred twenty thousand. That, um, at this time, we expect it to go down to somewhere in the range of, uh, the fifty thousand zone by the end of the month, but not moving that. So we're on track for what we anticipated would be happening at this time when we were given all of these different things. Um, and we knew that the excess cost payment would be coming in May. Usually does boost it up a bit, um, in May. So that fluctuation we had expected would occur. So we do expect to come in once again, um, around fifty or less. Uh, we do have Mr. McLaughlin here who's the business director. Um, if there's any other questions. But I can run over briefly some of these budget items. The finance facilities committee, we ran over them on June third, I believe. So I'll do a brief kind of overview of them, write down some of the overs and unders, give you a sense of where we are right now, our articulations on this. This is changing daily, um, because as we get closer and closer to the end of the year, these numbers fluctuate a little bit. Um, so, so these are not at all final, but they'll give you a general sense of where we're at. So in this case, salary number by two fifty-nine, six oh seven. Uh, that's been talked about a lot. Here in there as the super services supervisor, which I talked about, licensed nurse practitioner, um, that necessary for student first aid. Um, you know, the teachers, uh, one, one oh in the lead program, point five and point seven five. The two point five man, teacher, free behavior intervention specialist, and a B C D A. And those were illustrated, um, in a number of documents throughout the, the, uh, last few months of this year. Posted up there as we were going through budget season. Substitutes are under by one ninety-two. That number's gone down, but, uh, at the time of this report, it was about one ninety-two. We had, uh, fully utilized early police days. Dear substitutes covered the BD days in the past. We did a lot of things without the subs. Um, we also have a problem that we cannot find substitutes. So we desperately need them and we've all been covering different things and we've gotten these permanent subs in place, but we actually aren't able to use substitutes. We, we can't recruit the substitutes, which is part of a problem right now. Um, we are utilizing these subposition, permanent subpositions, so those cost less, um, although we're still not covering all the bases here. And we need to figure out a solution to that problem. In any case, um, that had us under budget this year by about one ninety-two as of this report. Overtime, uh, was under budget by about thirty-one, but it'll be reduced to a lot more between now, between May thirty-first and June thirtieth. Stipends over by about thirteen, three oh six due to the timing of the pay to participate funding. And payments for coaches and officials aren't, uh, fully complete as of the time of this report. Um, severance was under by about twenty-four, six oh eight. It was expected to be expensed due to some of the later time notifications. They can have a very large impact. We've had a couple come in, a couple of changes come in that affected us recently. So those numbers are gonna change again when we do the final end of the year, uh, close out on everything. Which is, again, I'll get, I'm gonna keep providing a little bit more information here, but it does change a lot to be now and, and once we get past June thirtieth, because a lot of things close out, um, commercials get, um, figured. Health and life insurance and dental, under budget by one forty-five due to claim reductions. The HSA has made an impact on, on how people are behaving, so you're seeing some of that. Workers' comp collectively were under by sixty-four. FICA, medic, social security, ICMA are directly driven by the result of, uh, some of the salary savings and staff hired at a lower amount than the people that were coming out. And of course, reimbursements have been incurred and won't be realized fully until the end of the year. And there were some questions, um, uh, sent in to the students agents about some of those too. People, I think, tend to use them a lot more. Um, professional ed services, um, this, this is over by about two twenty-one. We, last year, I believe, at the end of this year, weren't gonna be able to, um, manage certain things. So we've made some actions to prevent the literacy how program, um, and some other programs I'll mention as we get closer to the end of the year from getting hurt. Uh, literacy how is crucial to our phonics and crucial to some of our outplacement prevention. So we need to make a investment in that, um, to make sure that that continues going. Tech services, most of these vendors are in the maintenance area. So two thirty, four fifty-nine, comprised of things like the engineering services report for BGP, you know, the mechanical services. Um, engineering's about twenty-sixty-four, then the mechanical about sixty-six. Thing, equal roof- roofing seventeen K, integrated services and eco window film, uh, twenty-three paving, um, forty point nine. Dem electric eighteen point four, central acoustics, um, J Web construction for about eighteen and eleven. Overland flooring skips wastewater, um, and some licensing, tech licensing fees, software subscriptions, um, digital math and other curriculum services, um, that would comprise technical. Again, I'll be giving a better breakdown or a more detailed breakdown as we get to the end of the year. Usually, once we hit August or even September, I can hear what the final thing was, um, from all of this. Utilities, vehicle costs, under by about two thousand two twenty-six. Transportation, under by one fifty-one, eight eighty-nine. We combined some routes, less students were being transported to private placements, which is one of our objectives. And, um, the first excess cost payment, again, these, um, the two excess cost payments pushed that up a bit, but the balance should be spent down again more by June thirtieth, have a better idea. But we were able to save some money there. Tuitions were under by seven hundred thirty thousand. Uh, we see, again, that excess cost payment pushed that up a bit. Um, and we have less kids, uh, requiring certain special transportation, which is one of the objectives of the district. And, um, the district is still responsible for our outplacements and private services that we have to provide as part of I E Ps. But, um, we're having some favorable results here. We'll just kinda have to watch it carefully between now and the end of the year. Although I do expect that, you know, it'll come in somewhere on the same. Legal audit and consulting fees were under by about fifty-seven. Um, had lower legal expenses. Negotiations, like the, uh, those recently, the custodians were in this budget year. I took that with the team rather than, um, paying legal services to help us with that. Things like that helped a lot this year. That won't be possible next year because we'll be going in with the, the larger units, which are a little bit more, uh, more involved, so.
With the teachers in there.
Teachers, yeah. But, um, wherever I can, you know, we're gonna be working in to take care of that piece ourselves. Um, in this case, it did save some, save some money. Maintenance, custodial, repairs, rubbish, um, that's contract services, like heating, cooling, pump, load repair, ventilation work. Um, things like that. Travel and conferences, over by about sixty-three. Um, we did things that we needed to do for literacy how training, um, some corrective East Con training. And whenever we do these kinds of trainings, it's because we're responding to something that came up that we needed to make sure our people were trained for so that we didn't expose ourselves to certain liabilities. Rentals are over about, by about twenty-six. Um, that's gonna be probably a little higher by the end of the year due to higher copier overage charges. Um, and some rentals for trucks and things like that, um, boot handle truck, for instance, uh, the work that had to be done. Um, some of that we just underestimated a little bit. Let's see what else is back here. Um, instructional supplies, general supplies and materials, over by about one ten, four forty-nine here. That'll change a little bit between now and the end, not much. Um, orders is still being processed. It's, most of it's due to the timing. Uh, when we acquired materials and supplies and software and workbooks and things like that, that we know we're gonna be going into next year. And similarly, textbooks, uh, we needed to make an investment in textbooks this year uh, in anticipation of, uh, not possibly having that opportunity. So there were some additional textbooks, um, purchased in areas that we knew we may not be able to do. Some math texts, percentage, percentage learning, business texts, social studies texts, uh, readers for classrooms, things like that. We knew that we may not be able to get that, uh, given the future budget situation. And we did, um, to make sure we could maintain some of the programs that we've been working hard to maintain. Um, some of these things, if you don't have the resources like the readers, you can't do the program effectively if you can't. We questioned on it and that leads down the road of more designations and we don't want that.
And you're, when you say readers, you're referring to like the individual textbooks that are level readers?
Yeah, like by different, different reading levels, you know, the readers are, um, their texts or reading material to match variety of reading levels so that when a child, within a classroom, you could have a myriad of levels. You need to have enough of the readers to address each of the levels. And we don't, you know, you don't always get a chance to create those classroom sets and, and we have an opportunity to do that, so we're gonna do it. So we don't end up with situations where we don't have enough of readers, um, and we don't have readers. And if you don't have enough, you can't do your products, you can't do other things well. So, um, technology software is under by twenty-eight, um, you know, multi-year contracts. Protect the district from ransomware attacks, one of the things that we're listed again, but it's not, uh, it's not at the end of the year yet. And there's some fluctuations there as well. Then, um, then instructional prep, like two nineteen, um, took an opportunity to get this classroom furniture that was needed for science rooms. You know, science rooms have a special kind of stuff you have to buy so kids are safe in there. We've had some issues. So we wanted to make sure that, uh, we covered that base. Um, some of the computer replacements that get schools, music furniture, special ed equipment. Um, and principals' office and office supplies. Um, we also spent my net computers in that room to replace aging equipment. So that comprises more or less the larger areas right now. And as I said, as we get into the end of the year, August, noon, September, we'll be able to provide a even more detailed report about where this all landed. Some of these are in flux right now as we speak, but, uh, we went over this in the FFC meeting as well. And if we do get any other opportunities, we do have a series of things we wanna be able to make sure that we achieve for the district. Um, understanding by design training, for instance, I'd like to make sure we have that for the district. That's a philosophy that ties in with, um, all of our other philosophies. And it's an important one for the district to move forward. Uh, Math and Focus twenty twenty, our old Math and Focus system is being replaced by, um, the new stuff. And the old software and the old sites don't work anymore, so you need to invest in a new system. So we're looking at that as a possibility if, um, you know, if that opportunity arose. Um, the, the SERC's training for autism, training for the staff, obviously, we've been investing in that. We wanna continue to invest in that. Um, anthologies to help with the reading programs are a future thing we wanna be looking at, a possibility here as we get into the end. Curriculum hours, this time of year, we try to invest in curriculum as much as we possibly can. There are some plans remaining. We get teams working on curriculum. And you remember that, one of the things we had talked about is we had some of these other curricula that weren't finished. So we're looking to get more of the staff working on curriculum for science, math, D L A, writing, special ed instruction, um, algebra and things like that, um, if we can squeeze it in. So we're trying to get curriculum teams together where we have the resources to do so to get some of that taken care of. When the opportunity arrives to do, try to do that. So anticipate some of that, you know, maybe worked in here as we get to the final, final assessment on numbers. Um, and obviously, there's some similar work that needs to be done in technology. Um, a lot of stuff at BGP is covered, but, uh, there's a lot we have to do in prep, um, throughout the district. So that's, that's something that's gonna draw on it probably between now and then as well. So as we get into the end of, um, the year, this will all be updated. In fact, there's, there's even updates between now and the thirty-first, um, that have impacted some of these. So we'll be talking more about that probably in our August meeting and then the September meeting if I, if I can give you the final picture out on the end of it.
So how much is that substitute line ever go down?
The sub line that's left in it, what was left in subs at that moment in time was, um, one ninety-two under. Meaning we did not utilize all the funds for subs that we, you know, wanted. But we also have a huge sub problem in the district we're trying to resolve. Um, I did have a meeting, a couple of meetings on this all year long and I had a final meeting on it where a, a reasonably good idea, I mean, a good idea was brought up and I'm, I'm just trying to, um, address. Whenever somebody has an idea, we try it. And I think, um, when people keep coming up with new ways to skin this cat, we're trying to, uh, address it. So even though that we had some fun, some of it's because of some things we did like during the early police days instead of doing some other stuff and covering some TV ourselves and not using subs, not in this type of thing. But we have a major availability problem and that's, that's a big portion of that too. If we actually had the subs we needed, that number would be a lot lower.
Do you want to see records that, you know, actually have more, more of them changing everything, right? Because it's not, that we don't need them.
Right. And then we made some adjustments. We made some adjustments to trends, which aren't reflect affected there, but, um, but yeah, I mean, that's one that, we actually have people, just, we have a big issue with this sub situation that we need to resolve. So I wouldn't go slashing that.
I would remind you more when we talk about substitutes, that we've had people come up during public participation and talk about the fact that their class, their entitled class was sitting in cafeteria because they did not have a sub, which means students are not learning.
Right.
So when we talks about substitute availability being a problem, it is a problem.
So, so the substitute availability problem, is that due to, uh, low salary? Like what, what is the issue? Is it because of a low salary, because a lot of people are out there?
I mean, I'm sure if somebody, if you gave them, you know, if you said, hey, would you like ten dollars, I don't know whether it would say yes. But most of the time, what's happened when I looked at this was, um, people that, we have a certain population of people within a certain distance of our schools that are willing to do this. There's a population that is a fixed one. Um, if I, you know, broaden that and go out to certain areas outside of a certain range and I say, hey, you know, would you take, you know, X amount of money to come to Talon? They say no, because they don't, it's, they have their local town they go to. It's much easier for them. They get enough calls from there. And that price difference wouldn't ma- isn't big enough for them. they get enough calls from there, and that price difference wouldn't make, isn't big enough for them to wanna come here instead. So, we would end up offering a certain amount, probably losing that in other ways, and then not getting any tangible benefit out of it, so we just have to be careful how we approach the problem. There may be retired teachers that we could tap, that we could, you know, access, that after a certain number of months they can work, and we might, maybe if we had retired teachers that were within a certain range of our schools, we could compensate them at a certain level because they're a retired teacher, so maybe there would be a scaling there, maybe that would bring in some more people. But, right now, it doesn't seem to be really what we're offering that's the problem as much as we're just not a major population set. Yeah, we have a certain number of people interested in doing this, and the people that might be interested from another place would need a, in, 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 very significant amount of difference to come from where they are to here, where most of our population, it's because it's close that makes the biggest difference. So, so it's complicated, but we're gonna have to find a few ways of addressing it. Permanent subs have definitely helped, maybe an expansion of that concept as well, but, you know, we're just gonna have to keep working on that issue, and it is, it is an issue for sure.
Any other questions, or, forgive me, I've been out of the booth for a couple of months. I just, just quickly looking at it, I see a lot of items over budget, and I read the minutes and this, and we went through why things were over budget. It looks like the majority of the cost savings, so we could go over budget on those line items, is from reduction in outplacement, is that correct?
Well, I think there's a-
The line five sixty?
There's a couple of areas where we're under, and a couple of areas we're over, like the subs by one ninety, and yeah, the seven is a, you know, is a chunk out of the tuition. So I do think that there are transportation, things like that, so some of the things we're doing are making a positive difference. You know, I expect that when we say over/under, you know, under ten to twenty-two, you, if the Board of Ed, you have the responsibility of spending the money to help in education, however you're gonna do it, and while there will be some over/unders, the most important balance at the end of the year is the one at the end, that you're not in a negative situation at the end of the year, and I don't anticipate that it will, anticipate would be, again, positive by somewhere in the zone fifty or a year less than.
So are any of these that were overrun from the cost savings, have those been budgeted for for next year? So, like, any of the equipment, was that in next year's budget, you know, will we buy it this year instead?
Well, for instance, readers, if I knew that, if it looked to me like we weren't gonna be able to, to stay in a certain program next year, we would, we did go after anthologies and readers, anthologies as well, so that we could expand the programs that are benefiting us and helping us avoid those outmothers, things like that. So we did make strategic allocations here to, to stay within the objectives that we've been forming for the district with respect to providing the best program possible, leaving as few holes as possible, hopefully no holes in our programming product and things like that, so that we can strengthen them. Some of that is what we had planned on, some of it was, you know, popped up, and so we addressed it. So some of it is purchasing things that we know we're gonna need for next year that our point eight-four probably wasn't gonna give us the advantage of doing. But, you know, that's kind of what happens at the end of the year when you're in a situation like that. If you can realize things in transportation, you can realize things in subs, however good or bad that was, you then can reallocate that towards a program that desperately would need support like literacy how, because it's such a beneficial program for our district. Making sure we have that as strong as possible helps the kids in the district from a learning perspective, and helps us avoid being in a situation where we have kids heading into the zone of special ed or out of zone. And we have made some real positive impacts there, and we'll continue to expect the overall number as it has this year, some of our special programs, and in the next year or two, those will continue to have a very positive benefit for us. But we do have to be able to make strategic and tactical moves at the end of the year where we're able to, so that we can get those kinds of benefits for the town, for the schools, for the kids, and that kind of thing.
And I just see a lot of, I, just I know the board voted to get rid of an interventionist, and we wanted a curriculum director, and I just see a lot of money here that-
I don't remember getting, or, or to interventionists.
The two teachers up at the middle school, a few re-able.
Well, the reduction, the reduction you're gonna have to the point eight-four, there's adjustment in the budget from the group, because of the amount of paper to sustain in the budget year-to-year. So that, you know, whenever we move personnel, you're not carrying the personnel anymore. So, things you have in this last year and in previous years, overall, especially if you look at, and come back to some parity with where we were in twenty sixteen, when the state budget had a lot of hiccups, but for a stretch, going back many years, we made adjustments to that, and we probably will continue to make adjustments. And those things are, you know, whenever it's people, they, they, when they're removed, there, there's typically an adjustment that's made for that too. We were able to do some things here, you know, noticing again that transportation, noticing again the subs, noticing again some of the tuition, you know, there were some things that changed for us here that, that gave us an opportunity, and, you know, even if, if we don't take the opportunity to, to do things like autism programs, or literacy how, or Spire, or, you know, foundations, and if we don't do that, we are at a huge disadvantage when it comes to these meetings where we decide, you know, and we start talking about what services we've been providing students. Those meetings often decide which direction a situation goes in for, for a young person. And if we're providing the services, then that young person typically can stay in the general population, and things are going very well. Sometimes if you don't have those services, that's how we end up in that situation, that's not super. So, staff will want a piece of that puzzle, the foundations, Spire, literacy how, CERDs, all of those things are a very large piece as well. So, where you can actualize some, you know, savings, where it does pop up, or where there's an opportunity, shifting to those resources is important. It's not only the curriculum situation. We're not always sure where we're gonna be, where we are, where we are in a position that allows us to do that, and investing in that curriculum is really important, and there's a number of areas where we need to try to shore that up. We got a little bit of an opportunity to do that. We may not next year, you know, you have to take it when you have it. I'm, you're ready?
What was the excess cost rate this year?
The excess cost payment was two seventy, the last-
What was the rate?
The rate was, Martin, seventy-five.
Seventy-three to seventy-five.
Yeah, I can get the, it's always in that zone. But it's supposed to be a hundred.
No, I know that, no.
The state is supposed to give you a hundred, and they give you seventy-something, you know, often seventy-five.
You know, they're going down.
It's really, really hard.
They don't determine the percentage until, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's just very-
You don't really know.
But there's often a kind of shifting around that they do, your minimums. They give you seventy-five percent, but they can also raise or lower your threshold.
It's crazy, I'm not a-
And that, the data makes a difference too, you know, at a certain rate, if they raise the threshold, then you don't get reimbursed until you hit that threshold for that one child. They raise that by a couple thousand, it can mean ten of your kids. And not being, you know, your own district has to absorb rather than, than you-
A hundred cents, did you have a question saying, or you hit the wall?
No.
Oh, I thought you were asking my question at the same time.
Um, keep going.
Next time you see this, it's August, is that right?
So-
You see this again in August, the final?
You see that sheet again, you see it every time, you know, well, I mean, yeah, see it right off.
But we won't be-
You won't be in there in July, so you'll see it again in August. And I'll, I'm gonna do it in August, and then I'll do a September kind of wrap-up once we get all the things cleared out.
And we meet again next week, I think, which is-
Yeah, I mean, that, well, things will change some, they're not gonna, you know, there's not gonna, there's still be all the stuff cleared that will clear, you can, after the end of the year, you have encumbered items appearing. You know, it's not all the invoices coming right after.
Any other questions, comments?
So, some bad news. We'll take a look at the lunch prices, we'll take it, we'll look at item, this next item here is G R E. Let me get my computer slightly.
Yes, G.
Okay, so, Tallinn Food and Nutrition Services, I've met a few times with our excellent director, Cassie Harded, she's done an amazing job with our food service program. As you know, it's one of our programs that is self-sustaining. Excellent management over the years, has reduced our labor costs, adjusted for changes, and done all kinds of training opportunities to make our staff more capable. We participate in a buying cooperative, and we minimize waste, and work on perpetual inventory strategies. You know, the, the program is a great one, the director does an amazing job, keeps taking strides to increase participation, remarketing all kinds of things, creating all kinds of meals and taste testing, trying to keep the program going, but the state increase in minimum wage and subsequent wages are projected to really hit the program, and they're gonna, they're gonna make an impact across the state. Obviously, there's a reason for the state taking the action that it did, but we're gonna be making adjustments in various areas in our budget. This particular program, the impact will be something in the range of at least thirty thousand next year. The overall price of food has increased ten to fifteen percent. It's had a pretty big impact on the food service budget, and, you know, those are just two of the bigger chunks of what's impacting it. We also expect some of the most recent economic kind of situations in the country to have an impact too. So, we're gonna need to make adjustments in prices again. You know, keeping in mind that, again, if you were to go, you know, outside, try to go to Subway and find a, you know, a Subway sandwich meal for three dollars and thirty-five cents, it's really, really hard to do. Whether it's the three fifty at the high school, or the three thirty-five, you know, if you go to the deli, you can get a sandwich made for you, and you get to pick all the items, things like that. That's three seventy-five and four, there's nowhere in town that you can get, you know, get a deli sandwich meal like that for that amount of money. So, again, keep in mind that the school system's doing a great job, and this school system, and our director's doing a great job of maintaining prices that are amazing considering what you'd get in the market outside of school. But, if we, if we don't increase the prices of our lunches, slowly but surely, it's going to impact the ability of the program to pay for itself, and you'll start to have to subsidize it through the Board of Ed's operating budget. So the objective is to try to avoid getting to a point, and some towns have gotten, where you're subsidizing the food service budget with your operating budget, because it's possible not to. Tallinn's in a strong enough place that it can, you know, that it can manage a three dollar and fifty cent lunch typically for, for its, you know, families. If a child is in a situation where the family's struggling, either, I mean, there are free, free lunch status, and there's reduced lunch status, and that's available for, you know, families that are struggling. So it's not gonna be that the kids who are, you know, in a situation or a tough situation won't eat, they definitely can get that status, and they would get the reduced or free lunches. We're just talking about, you know, the typical general population lunch. Three fifty is probably not out of, out of whack with a decent price for a lunch in, in America in this community right now. So, I think it's reasonable what we're looking to do here, but I can understand that any time we talk about making an adjustment, it's not a great conversation. But right now, where we're at is that the elementary would be three fifteen, middle would be three thirty-five, high school would be three fifty, milk would be seventy-five cents. And the whole deli lunch thing, which is the grinders and all that, three seventy-five at middle and four at- So this was, is submitted to you for your consideration, once again, I know that you like to have two reads of these things, so review and discussion, but in an upcoming agenda, perhaps next week would be the second agenda, I don't know if that's too fast or not, but we do have to make plans for next year. Be better to know where we're at, of course, I understand whatever your timeline is, we'll go with. But reviewing it, chewing on it, giving the public a chance to chew on it, and then coming back to our next meeting and making a motion to accept these new prices would be, would be great if that's a possibility. And if not, again, the issue is that, you know, looking at the arc over time, we'll, we're gonna be get, getting ourselves into a situation where ultimately, somewhere down the line here, the Board will have to subsidize it.
Can we talk about, oh, okay, I don't know. Um, I just was wondering, is there, I don't know the depth and breadth of the programs at the high school, so I apologize for this question, but is there kind of a greenhouse, is there any ag program at the high school that could, you know, no?
We don't have an ag program here, I don't know.
About me, plus, no, I was thinking like a greenhouse where like, you know, high school kids could, I don't know.
Yeah, their own professionals.
Yeah, like just as another, you know, learning and helping the community kind of thing, but, okay, maybe another year. There's a first grade teacher. Yeah.
When we do decide to do that, we do composting at the same time.
I broke composting right here. Is there any other questions?
This last time we raised prices, well, about last year's time, I think.
Was it about the same month or around that?
It's, it was the middle of the year.
I mean, I know it's been, it hasn't been long, it's about a year roughly, but, you know, what hit us pretty heavy, and again, I, we understand the reason for the, for the changes in minimum wage, things like that, but that impacts us a lot. It's a, basically, we understand why, and it helps the country in many ways, but this is, this is where you'd see it kind of-
It's where it shakes out.
This is where some of it will shake out, yeah, and food prices are going up, and that's also shaping up here. And I can see that when I go to South and Shop every weekend, there's stuff that's changing a bit here for, you know, for various reasons. So, you know, again, this is just, it's either we make the adjustment, or the operating budget starts to, starts to enter a situation where we have to subsidize.
When we raised prices a year and a half ago, did, did it affect meals served?
Uh, right now, we, we are dropping a bit in meals served, but I don't think it made a dramatic effect because of that. I think it's, it's also, we also have some changes to the population, you know. A couple of things can affect that, but it's, it's kind of what we expect at this time. I think what will be happening now, you know, supply and demand, maybe to lose a couple, but, for instance, I've, I've had some of this in, you know, my own town, things like that. Certainly, if I'm, if I'm looking at three thirty-five versus three ten, or three fifteen versus three ten, in this case, I'm sorry, two ninety to three, to three fifteen, you know, for elementary, it's probably not gonna stop people from buying the lunch, they just may not buy the cookies. You know what I mean, it's, it's what they have left over, that usually we pick up in the other lines and things like that. So it does have an impact, but, you know, what's left on there, they're just, they might not spend as much on the ice cream, or there might not be a lot left over. When I send my, my kids sometimes, I'm like, where did that go? Some of it went to lunch, the rest of it goes to, you know, those other items. There's less to spend all around, when they put in their twenty-dollar check, it doesn't go as far, so it does impact some of that, but, again, the adjustment here should cover for some of that too, that's the plan. You know, my, my thought is that, given the amount that you're charging, again, for a high school lunch being three fifty, you can't get a, you know, you might be able to get a slice of pizza somewhere for special, you know, at a gas station for three fifty plus a Coke, but, you know, you're gonna get a nutritiously balanced meal here for three fifty, not a, not a hot dog at a gas station and a Coke, so, you know, we have to live up to certain standards of nutrition that, that your Jibby Stop or whatever doesn't. So, you know, I guess it's possible to get a lunch for three fifty, but not a healthy one, and I think the schools provide that at a decent price point, you know, with, with, even with this increase.
And free and reduced lunch, I'm assuming the forms go out every year, so folks can, like, it's an easy enough process to-
They are available, but we're not legally able to ask people if they need it, but they can, but we do make it easy generally to tell us, we try to, you know, it's a difficult thing to do for anybody, but-
It's a delicate-
We encourage it, and we keep them extremely, extremely confidential. So for instance, I cannot, I do not have a list of, of, of those individuals.
Good, I like it.
And I don't know who they are, we just, we have a, we have a- And I don't know who they are. We just, we have a, we have a method for processing them so that we do not know who those individuals are. So, nobody would really know. And I encourage people to always try and use that option if, if things are tough, because there's no reason not to. But again, you know, three fifty for a school lunch, that is, it's.
If, if we were, if we had to subsidize, would it impact the federal programs that the food service people?
It shouldn't. I mean, I think, you know, it's just gonna be that it costs X to do this. We get so much from Fed, so much from state, so much from the health of food initiatives, so it's just not covering the bottom line.
Right.
So, then I gotta come back to the board for X amount. Right now, it's been managed so well that, you know, we have not had to do that, never, but at least in the, the ten that I know, we have not had to do that one, put that burden back on the operating. And I would say that it's probably not a great time that we would want to start filing things on that way, you know, there's some uncertainty. So, I think it's, again, if I were looking at prices, the three fifty was something like five fifty, I would start to say, that's getting way up there for a lunch. The three fifty's not, it's still a competitive amount of money for a nutritious lunch that has all of those, you know, nutrition components to it.
I'd like, I'd like to read on there. I mean, not to say no, but just to give anybody who feels like this is a hardship and give folks a chance to speak up.
Yeah, listen, we don't pass the bylaw, so it's not a required program that people have to pay for. It's bylaw law because, you know, you have to deliver it. Yeah, so it's, but, I agree.
You want to, just to recap, if we don't pass this, what do you do?
Eventually, you're gonna be, you're gonna be subsidizing it. We'll run out of what we have, our reserve there, you know, we don't have an operating budget subsidization of it. This is designed to avoid that.
I was just gonna make a comment. It's in the item background, but I know Abby uses, she utilizes local farms and regional sources.
That's great.
For food service, so she does a great job.
You really can't get better than our current staff.
Oh, if, how are we gonna notify the comments of the person, please? It's usually, if you do this during just a year, so it just kinda happens, you know, and people are like, oh, whoa, whoa, and like, they'll just recognize it happen.
Or it'd be in the digital backpack.
I could do a public message, everyone would love that.
Can you do it at five in the morning?
I actually can.
Pretend you're closing school.
Not that we want to. I, we can put it out at the very beginning of the year with other materials that are handed out. There's not a lot that goes on paper, that's the thing, but we would put it out.
You're saying the beginning of the year. I hope you don't mean when, September first.
No, it'd be with other registration materials and other things that we pack.
So, maybe you all get it through July, that people can start thinking about that?
When the, when the school packets go out, you know.
Which is when?
August, September. You know, various dates along the path of August to September.
Well, maybe not. You know, somebody's saying first day of school.
If you wanted me to, I could do a mailer to send home.
I think, I, I don't think you wanna wait till the week school starts to say, oh, by the way, we jacked up the prices by thirty percent.
The mid-year, like, I usually do a bulletin in the summer and things like that. We don't usually, you know, put in paper mail.
No, no, no.
But definitely, we'll put something like this in my bulletin.
Just as an email, an eblast.
I will do an eblast in the summer.
Because I think, I think that's more, people are more like.
Yeah, it's not like that much, but maybe it's better given as a.
Yeah, sure, on the Facebook page too.
Yeah, I might, not do it.
Okay.
But I would do the, the eblast, only because. Hey, you know, that's, you know, freezing lunches, celebrate Tawn, you know. It doesn't mesh with the whole PR thing.
Actually, you should post it on the follow-up document. That would be great.
But I'll do an email caller system, you know, that's on. But once again, you have to make that this, you know, next.
Yeah, once it's decided.
Okay.
So, that's all by all.
Yep.
Do you want to committee liaison report?
Finance and facilities manager, going over the end of year budget. Items, possible topic for a future finance and facilities meeting is to review the grounds agreement. I don't know when you can schedule that all, I think that would make sense.
Would you, wanna do that in August?
Yeah, I should have a running desire to do it in July.
It's okay.
Sam's, Sam's idea, so.
If we do it in August, then we get the final numbers on the year end too, right? We can go over those.
Yeah, I mean, the, yes, roughly, depending, if later August is better or not, I guess.
We can throw those two topics together and do it in August.
Yep.
Any other policy in that? And we're supposed to meet tomorrow, but due to circumstances, we canceled that meeting. I mean, I don't know, maybe August also, I'm not sure. We haven't talked about it.
It'll be in November.
Why don't we do a transition regulation?
And then negotiations, we completed negotiating with the city, which had a contract, we were going to look at, and it went really well. That was great. And then we started with teachers and administrators, little and old.
Uh, communications did not meet, um, but I did attend the high school booster club meeting. So, this was their last meeting of the school year, and so they just kind of wrapped up with, um, the fundraiser that they did. They also have volunteers that take care of, um, the banner project for grab for the seniors.
That was the first time I saw that. That was just like really great.
Isn't that cool?
It's really great.
One's in the rain.
I know.
It's not, this was the worst weather event I've ever had to deal with, if it was banners. Um, I'm glad most of them stayed up. It was rough. Um, so, yes, the booster club takes care of that project. They're working on some ideas to get more people involved with soccer concessions next year because the mom that was taking care of it is, is a graduate, which doesn't have any more kids, so, um, talk about that. And basketball concessions and, um, the Eagle Scramble is scheduled for Sunday, September twenty-ninth. That's the golf tournament. It's at Topstone in Fall, and they are looking for full sponsors, big sponsors, anybody that would like to participate in golfing during the event or sponsoring, so it's, it was, it went well last year, so I think it was a good turnout.
Okay, I'm sorry to interrupt, but the senior gift, I believe, was a, you know, concession stand, I'm trying to help for that.
It's actually a ticket booth.
Ticket booth.
Ticket booth, okay, different one, sorry if that was wrong.
Yes. Yeah, it's a ticket booth, um, I believe it's gonna be located around the back because the, um, secretaries, uh, manna, out in the cold weather, the wall and all that, will now have a safe place to be.
Warm. Everybody's gonna want a volunteer now.
Well, they usually handle collect tickets, but, um, someday we're working on a concession building, yes. That is the goal. So, it was good. They had a lot to talk about from this past year. And they're doing what they can to help out with Coach Katie and, um, Miss Burchers. Negotiations and process efforts.
I wasn't done. Um, I'm talking about negotiations, um, as we go into, um, negotiating teachers and admin. If anybody on the board, um, would like to put, give your thoughts about it to me, that would be, um, acceptable. Then I can bring it to the meeting. And then also, I forgot about the word, the building committee.
I was wondering about that. I didn't know.
Totally forgot. Um, we went a, when did you go? We met, um, two weeks ago. We had another meeting tonight, where we're supposed to receive the budget for the project. Um, I was hoping they would send us something, but they haven't, so I guess we gotta get it when we get there.
Well, so, the state has decided to do some of its work in special session. We can do some things.
Okay.
So, that, some of that will be tomorrow night, and I think, um, the school construction director, um, Casa Di Amato's will be there. But, uh, you know, we, we won't be able to go out every, because the special session will have to.
Probably not even ask anything, so.
Yeah.
Especially would be nice. In terms of dollars, like, I mean, other than forty-six million, that's all we know.
Some of it's tied to that special session.
Yeah, so, um, also, so when we met two weeks ago, we had a tour for Trow and we went to classrooms and storage areas and saw the needs of the school that are more than just the classrooms, you know, and hallway, but then, um, then the architect gave a presentation, um, showing some of the places that they've recently, um, some of the recent projects at schools, elementary schools and other things, but it's really exciting. And there's a lot of really exciting opportunities that can be pulled if we are able to do it. More to her other major career?
No problem.
But you also, everybody probably already knows right now.
There's, uh, right now, the hope is that a hundred percent of the portables will be reimbursed. That eighty-nine percent of the. So, that's, that's again, we're talking about this.
We're waiting on this.
That special session.
Special session.
That's what's been talked about, uh, be very positive.
And that's in July, late special session?
Um, I've heard two times, late June and July, but in the next couple of weeks.
Next couple of weeks is the other plan? Special session, never a special session?
And, you know, we talked to the state and officials at the state, but there's a lot of, you know, it's a very, 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 very strong feeling this is what we're gonna be having. This will be the case.
I think most of us were at the town council this week. So, I don't know, let's do an update on that.
I don't, it's good. I was there. The specialty. Yeah, I just have a second, check it, check it.
Everywhere, you know.
Picture of that.
Yeah.
So, they. Just move on, sorry, Michelle. I know some of us want to try and get home by certain times, but it's about.
Pack his food, yes.
You gotta get home by nine because I'm not gonna get Tawn with Hatters on, but.
You mean the bachelorette?
No.
No, it's pack his food, it's Tawn.
Anyways, um, so, the big one was, I had so many screens going on, was the ECS money coming back to Tawn. The council talked about it for quite a while, about different options. People here can elaborate if they want to, but I did send out an email yesterday to Bill, um, request a joint meeting to possibly talk about the ECS funding and how we can work together to help the community, and I'm prepared, so hoping he will.
Should we pick a date? That would work.
Yeah, I'm back first, but I'm.
Well.
Sound of a date.
For a couple of dates. Do we have any Tuesday's? So, we could.
Yeah, I think we can.
No, it was between, it was between, uh, Bridge Grove and Town Council.
That's like every Tuesday, that's all day, right?
Yeah. Unless Town Council was up.
Yeah, something to do at six o'clock kind of, before one of those Tuesday meetings, make it easy for them. But the sooner the better too, because we're gonna miss the opportunity. The window closes fast. If we don't move quicker, then we hate to see, you know, us lose just because of a non-decision, which doesn't cost, it's, it doesn't cost anything to make this decision.
Yeah, yeah, right. I mean, what, Tuesday is, like, next Tuesday they have a meeting, although, yes, it's.
Could folks make it next Tuesday at six?
Yeah.
Is it twenty-fifth?
Yep. Twenty-fifth? I think it worked.
How do you put our, but.
Yes. It's, no. Christina?
Eddie.
You know. Jack goes back to the old people way.
Twenty-fifth.
Oh, yes, twenty-fifth.
Probably. It's tough getting from six o'clock to work, but.
Yeah. It is tough for me too.
Yeah, I can try to.
Oh, what can we say? Hey, that's Tuesday maybe? All right, um, any other comments on the Town Council meeting? Comments, but I think that was a big thing, but.
We talked about that. Right, is that what that meant? Was that before? It was before.
October eleventh, yeah.
Yes. Right, don't remember.
That was May twenty-eighth.
That was May twenty-eighth.
What you talked about, but.
Wait a minute.
We have a general fund that's, right.
You know, we talked on that, so. On that?
So, what else have you got?
So, what happened up on May twenty-eighth was, um, they approved the capital items, but not the one-to-one initiative that was in there for forty-two thousand. Just not considered a capital item. But they left the amount in there that we could put towards another capital item that was needed to be done. Um, that would be determined by, um, I guess, you and Steve would talk about that?
Well, we, you know, we talked to them. We, uh.
Yeah, but I'm sure there's plenty of things at the top that need to be done. The suggestion was also made that, um, that we, um, utilize the technology advisory board for, uh, measuring, I guess, consulting on the one-to-one initiative.
Yeah, they're smart and good people, and, uh, we've talked to them and conferred with them at the board and certain.
I think they have some new people on the board, Andy Powell's the chair, but, um.
Some of their Thursday meetings, I don't know, they, they brought, uh, me, some things we have, but.
They meet at night?
Yes, they used to and typically I think they did, but we'll, we, um.
Do we want to invite them to one of our meets?
We'll try to. Well, you are important if you, if you want, but I'll probably be going to a little of their TAB meetings next year just to drop in when there isn't a Hilton committee or somebody else.
Or you could, um, even connect with Andy.
Yep, and he and I talked for a few minutes, but we can, uh, TAB went through this sort of stage where I think they had taken a break for a while. I'm not sure of that, but I think they have, and I think they're coming back in again, so I think we'll be able to meet with them and benefit from their expertise.
So, with the one-to-one, what does that mean? Sorry, I see, I'm, I think I just don't know what you're asking. So, it's not in a, we still have to ask about.
Well, remember that, one-to-one is, once engaged, it's, it's kind of the first you're checking out the situation to see if it's sustainable.
But is it?
But it's, that's not, you know, that, that, that not going is, is not gonna stop this climate raise to happen, because it's important and all the reasons that we talked about. There's a one-to-one committee that we've been meeting a month. It's just a paradigm shift. And it's gonna be a. It's just a paradigm shift, and it's gonna be a very beneficial one for the districts, and we're gonna. Keep it moving.
I think we have it as a capital project. I understand, you said something about, but I can't remember why we had it listed as a capital project.
I would think most towns who do one-to-one computers do it through capital, because. Once you start, it's hard to, I don't think, well, it's fun to do it in capital plan, it's, um. And it probably, it wasn't always, I think it's something that they realized that you really do need to continue to, you, you can't stop.
Yeah.
And so, can't, at one year say, oh, well, you know, we have a tight budget, so we're not gonna replace the gear, or.
Future possibilities include your education, sort of, technology is one of those. Especially in capital. So there's options, and, um.
Just strategically, the challenge with that is, you can't compound.
No, um.
I just can't count on anything, but.
Right, I mean, I, I do see, the reason why the district would be pursuing this is, and, and for the first phase of it, it's quickly be taking them home. They just grab them in the morning and come back in the eve, in the afternoon, drop them off. But the purpose of them, you know, they won't need to use these labs anymore, they'll have them, they can use them in every class throughout the day. Won't have to have carts all over the place to, you know, bring them with them. And then when it comes to time to take S P A C testing and all that, they just flip it open and do it, and make the schedules ten times easier and faster. You won't have to have four days of rotation schedules, because they'll do them right there. So it's just, and again, textbooks are migrating to this subscription methodology over the old paper. Right now, they're incentivizing people into it, and eventually there probably won't be paper text options the way there are today. So it's, um, and we're already seeing shifting in the way that they do it, for things like math and focus twenty twenty, they're abandoning what's called the flash technology for the new technology stuff. So it's, it's all shifting towards that kind of, um, that kind of medium.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, that's.
So we gotta get ready for it, and if we don't, we're just, it's gonna be a bad place to be. So you're phasing it in with one grade right now, and that's the objective to make happen, and that's, um, what we can do.
Are the current computers purchased through capital or through expense? The, uh.
Typically, machines are brought through offer, you know, which we, I don't know. I would call that typical. No, not, not completely.
I don't think it's a requirement.
No, no, I'm just, I'm just saying generally, I'm not, I'm not like in a kind of the level that it's not possible to ever do it any other way, just generally. Obviously, E R F, some of that is capital, so capital would be, you know, I mean. Some of that money is a, you know, E R F is a debt, it's capital, obviously.
Any other updates, uh? I don't know what Chairman's per, person's report, because I got so, so much, I sent it at the point of information about the graduations. It really is my favorite time of year, so, sorry, I'm saying, yeah. They did a really great job last week, and I'm so proud of all the students in English from all, wherever they go. And I think it's all different places, um. Just no board.
Yeah.
Todd Lee did do a great job.
He did.
He did.
He did.
He does have a great job with that graduation.
That was really right there.
Yeah.
That was a very difficult thing, he, he did it, do the whole thing with grace, and, um, I think he does a great job.
And the middle school promotion was done very well as well.
Yes.
Absolutely, and Randy and Tony's done well.
In the fifth grade production, I had never just.
Oh, yeah, the fifth grade, the fifth grade.
Second, third, yeah.
Yeah, it was really.
We did a lot of great baby pictures.
So did my daughter, my daughter cried too, and it's what she, I had this on, I didn't make sure she was up there. She's just emotional, I mean. We cry every day.
Um, they do a nice job with that one.
Yeah. And it was good.
We had some technical difficulties, but, yeah, they worked through it. Um, no board action tonight, go back up to public participation. Anybody's welcome. Can you just come up with your name, in Agnes, please?
Um, my name's Michelle Shagman, I live on two thirty Caitlin, and I was just wondering if after the meeting, any of you in the world have like five minutes to talk on taking a classroom class in community psychology? So when we're assigned, we're supposed to come here, or to a community, write a paper on it, so if like any of you have just like five minutes, or.
Could we, we have an executive session, all right?
Yeah.
So we have to figure.
Well, it's.
Takes about five minutes.
Usually take a couple minutes for the, for the.
Yeah, yeah.
We can, but yeah.
We have an executive session after, it's gonna take like three or four hours after all of this. So, and then we clear out the employees, how about if you grab one of us, I'm sure there's probably nine of us that would enjoy doing this.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Hi, ten, you two, seventy-one, whoever wrote, um, when you were talking about the financials, one of the things that you said was over was tech services, and you mentioned, um. The maintenance, knowing the mechanical, paving and roofing, is any of that the, um, the capital projects that were approved to do, or is this on paving and roofing on top of the capital?
I don't think so, no.
No?
It's part of, but I, I have more details on that by the end. There's various paving projects, some of which are capital and some are.
Brent Foosey for Lower Witch, composting was brought up, the act commission is actually looking into something to do with composting program, so, um, a little point of information there. Um, a couple weeks ago, or a couple meetings ago, you guys had, um, so, an educational forum about LGBTQ plus. Um, and town is having its first pride picnic in the park this Friday in Crandall. Um, from six to eight P M, it's bring your own dinner and, um, meet everybody, so we're fortunate to see a lot of people there.
Eight o'clock?
Six days, six to eight, six to eight at the Crandall Pavilion. And thank you for so much for all the year-end events, um, it is great to see the students celebrated in so many ways. Um, I had an opportunity to talk to a, a lot of people who've been graduating or being promoted, um, and they were very appreciative of everything that was done by the schools, so, thank you. Any, any points of information? Thank you.
We got a lot of features. But they're the same gen.
They're the same general ones.
I will make a motion, then we'll take a five-minute break and.
Motion to go into executive session and eventually go out and invite, eventually.
Right, and, well, anybody has any question?
If you're not inviting me right away, I could sit down with, um, Ms. Shagman.
We have to discuss your things, so I assume we're not gonna have you present, unless you have a.
So Ms. Shagman, you and I could sit down.
You need, do you need a board member or the superintendent, okay?
Um, a board member preferably.
I'm gone, I'm gonna go for five minutes.
Fisher too.
Wait, 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 Bob, we have a motion, so she made it, so. Did you do it?
Get it.
Jeff made a motion, we invited superintendent.
I second it, man.
Any discussion? Are we?
No, we're not inviting you officially.
Oh, we need to come out and buy a motion.
So I've got.
We have to just go into discuss, and then we'll.
Sorry, let me, let me rephrase.
If you invite him, we can have him sit out for the proper one, we sit out.
Right.
So, it's a rephrase, we are inviting.
Just not yet.
I can't say eventually.
Did we sharpen the axes?
So we are inviting.
Second.
I already seconded it.
You already got seconded.
All right, this is gonna make it a few seconds, Michelle seconded, uh, any discussion?
No.
Uh, favors, yeah, already posed, no.